All right, I will call this special meeting of the town council to order. This meeting is being held for the consideration of our proposed five-year capital improvement plan. I will ask I'll ask you, Brian, to give us a presentation on it and then we can open up the public hearing item. Okay, give me one second to share screen. Okay, there, great. Just bring your stuff, okay? Sorry, I'm just trying to get a feel for before we get rolling here. While you're doing that, I'll just address the way we're going to handle it because the agenda is a little bit ambiguous tonight. So Brian's going to go through his presentation, pass council to hold the questions to the end. Then we're going to open up the public hearing. We don't have a whole lot of public on tonight, so we'll let them ask questions first and then council have its chance to have a discussion. Sounds good. All right, so here we go with the capital budget. Presentation. All right, everything the town does from providing services to its residents and citizens to equipping employees to effectively perform their jobs requires the existence of physical assets. So this is large equipment, trucks, technology. You'll see a lot of technology here, school facilities, keeping our school facilities upgraded and safe. Our buildings, parks, our streets, everything. Assets must be purchased, maintained and replaced on a timely basis or the usefulness in providing public service will diminish. A lot of our larger equipment you'll see as we go through like say trucks and tractors and different types of apparatus. It becomes more expensive to maintain them. And also you'll start to see in some of those stuff you'll see down the road here. It becomes difficult to find parts for them as well as they get older. And the cost of maintaining them begins to outweigh the cost of replacing them. And it makes good fiscal sense to manage that. This is this is the town's five-year capital improvement program. It's developed to ensure adequate capital investment in the town's assets and to provide an orderly method for funding these assets. Now, we could push off everything as far as we can down the road, but eventually that starts to pile up and becomes problematic. So this is kind of the plan to do that. But there is some flex, we'll move some stuff around year to year. As we move out to our G or four and five, and we'll discuss that we're already in discussions of flexing and changing some things as I as I start to discuss these things again more in depth with Dr. Will. All right, the definition of a capital project is any project to be included in the town's capital improvement program should fall into any of these three following categories. Any new or expanded physical facility including preliminary design and related professional services. So you know, that's that's architecture, that's engineering. So if we're going to build something that requires that, and we'll get into some engineering stuff down the road here. It kind of incorporates all that. So it's not just say the building, it's also the other costs associated with it. Land or property acquisition, we don't do much of that, but there are some good ones way out on the horizon here. And then items of non-reoccurring nature where the benefits are realized over a long period of time. So they're not popping up every year. Now, there's there's some things that may look like they're popping up in IT, but really they're different parts that we need to move along. The life expectancy of the product's outcome is non-reoccurring nature and should have a useful life greater than eight years. Again, sometimes with IT stuff, however, you're seeing five years tends to be, you know, the rate in which it's replaced. By all accounts in professional research, ambulances should be replaced about every six years or so, five or six years. So this is this is a general gauge of eight years. You will see throughout this, we outlast eight years and life expectancy on every single thing that we have. And we get into DPW, we'll talk about the consultant report where they basically with most pieces of equipment, they wanted to last about 10 years, 10 to 12 years at most as getting the parts and repair become more costly. The cost of a capital project should be relatively high, non-operational expenditure for the town and generally in excess of $10,000 for equipment or facility improvements. And you'll see that's that's obviously how we're doing it. This is the schedule of our capital planning process. So the capital budget requests were submitted to my office in October of 2024. When I get those capital requests from my department heads and the board of ed, I like to go out and look at each and every one of them. We take pictures, you know, when it comes to Dr. Willock, he's with me, he's on the roof, he's in the buildings. We're opening and closing lockers, looking at cafeteria tables, everything. I don't, I don't like spending our town's tax dollars. And so if I'm going to come here and tell you we need to pay for it, I've looked at it, I agree with the director and we work it into our planning process here. In October, there's a preliminary capital budget committee review and department heads meetings and board of education superintendent is included in those meetings. So that's kind of what I just just talked about where we go. I kind of squeeze them on, why do we really need this? Prove it to me that we really need this and is this, you know, at the time Lisa was here, the next year you'll be here. Where we also discuss, is it is it smart to finance it? So that's kind of the process, they prove that we need it. I asked them, is this a smart time to put it into our process? So everything that's in this in this capital budget that's coming up to be paid for this year, I believe everything has been in many been here for many years prior to. In the week of December, I sent council the capital budget so they can get a preview and start digging in on it. There was a minor change in year five. We, as we all know, the animal control facility is dated and will be shut down in in four or five years by the state of Connecticut based on new Department of Agriculture, I believe, rules. And so we had to, we had to get that into our capital plan. I do hope that we'll get grant money to pay for it. Still, there'll be a 20% match if we do get that. So I needed to start including and planning on how we're going to pay for it. To do that, I bumped out two DPW large trucks and stage lighting at Talon High School. This was discussed with Dr. Willet and also discussed with Director Lappin from DPW and both were fine and completely understanding that these things happen. On March 12th, today, obviously, we're in the capital budget hearing. On March 12th, we will present the full budget to council, which will include the capital program. And basically, when council decides on a budget, they are approving the capital plan and that is submitted to the residents for referendum. And when if and when they approve a referendum, that capital budget is approved. If there are amendments to be made in that process prior to, we will do that. Okay, these are the types of funds, type of funding methods that we have. They're all different types of areas where we have money and how we pay for things. So not everything's paid for, we're out of the same bucket per se. It is the general fund, capital non-reoccurring fund, non-referendum notes, that's debt. Local LoSiP is a state grant, town aid, TAR we call it, is a state grant and the school construction grant, the ambulance cemetery, referendum borrowing, unallocated capital and recreational special reserve fund, utility reserve fund. Those are all in our town charter, I believe, section C9. You can get information on what each of the, each of these funds has different rules, different strings attached, different ways that we can spend the money, how we can spend the money. There's just a lot of, a lot of detail in those funds. The structure of those funds are which which are what help us and the policies attached or what help us maintain our triple A bond rating is that it's, there are a lot of guardrails in each of these funds. All right, this is going to be difficult to see here, but a spreadsheet of all of the council, you have that, those in front of you. Again, as discussing the type of funds, that is across the top line of this chart. Those are all the locations where we have funding, basically, again, the buckets where the money is. Immediately below those are the amounts of amounts of money currently in that fund. Now, keep in mind, that is a snapshot and there are, again, a lot of strings attached and it's and it's kind of floating. Again, it's a loose snapshot of how much is in those funds and a lot of flex in there. But that's what we can do to try to show you what's currently in there. On the left side is the departments, the town departments. And each department, as they go across the chart, you can see where they're getting money and how much. And the fund totals all the way to the right for the departments and how much is coming out of each fund all the way down at the bottom. In the town of Talon, we have a sewer system. Not everyone's on it, but a good amount of the town is. We do not have our own town's sewer system. We are a part of the town of Vernon Water Pollution Control. And the plant where the Vernon, their water pollution pollution control plant Vernon, six years ago was upgraded. They needed to make upgrades to the facility. The cost of those upgrades were roughly 3.2 million. Talon is a small contributor to the sewer system. It consists of five towns, Talon, Manchester, Vernon, South Windsor and Ellington. Our portion of what we agreed to pay out of that 3.2 million is 5.63%. This is the sixth year of our debt payment. So it started in 2000, well, six years ago. And there's 14 more years to go. Each year after this, we'll be paying 164,906 moving forward. To pay for this, on the general fund, we pay 134,000, basically 135,000 each year or so. And out of the general fund and 30,000 out of CNRE, that'll that'll show up again later. But when you see this, this payment, understand this payment was to upgrade the Vernon facility. I'll discuss later on some plans we have for the parts of the sewer system that we own and some upgrades that we have coming. All right, the increase in general fund spending from last year, this year is 227,000. This is a planned increase during this year and then will be reduced in 26 and 27 onward. We are planning and recommending at one time use of the general fund, unassigned, general fund, unassigned fund balance to cover this increase in order to have a zero impact for this capital plan to have a zero impact on our mill rate. So and again, these projects go all across all of our departments and included in this is the board of ed. All right, fiscal year 25, 26, capital projects funded by the general fund and the total amount is 624,224. The town administration projects, again, out of the general fund, that 134,000 for the the sewer system, the upgrades to the Vernon facility. And then we also have the replacement and depreciation of our town-owned light duty vehicles, 10 of which are the town and three of which are the board of ed. The town depreciation and replacement cost is 54,000. This is planning for, again, depreciation and replacement of these vehicles down the road. Again, as they get older, the repairs start to cost more. We look to buy newer vehicles. Every year I sit down with Dr. Willet and our DPW director and discuss the need for these vehicles and whether we're going to replace them, do we need to replace them? As with any position or piece of equipment, we lose it, I question, do we, do we need it? Do we need to replace it? And then we make an evaluation. Board of Ed projects in the general, coming out of the general fund, TMS auditorium seats, 188,000. These are the original seats to the addition of the old Talon High School, now the Talon Middle School, the same seats I sat in when I was in high school there. It's certainly, without dating myself, certainly time to replace them. The thing is, many of the seats have been damaged over time and a long time ago, you could just call the old seat company and replace them. Well, any, any seat that was put in there back in the 1980s is not readily available now. And now they cannot find the replacement seats anymore. So Dr. Willet has asked for 188,000 for that. With me tonight is also our fire marshal, Rob DeBiega. There's a, there's a requirement to replace district fire doors in this, in the, for, in some of the schools. Rob, can you explain what that is? It's 100, almost 113,000.
Yeah, I don't know in particular about the dollars, but I can tell you that it's a code, it's a fire code. It requires that an engineer-type person, a professional, do a review of all the fire doors within our schools. And they did do that. They did hire somebody who came in and recognized quite a few deficiencies of which I think this is a cost of repairs. So it's a very specialized niche for these fire doors. And they have to, they have to close properly, they can't be propped open. They have to be able to hold back the force of the fire or smoke and solvents. It's very detailed. So it requires somebody specializing in that. And this is what, this is what it turns out to be. We had a lot of failures.
If there's any questions about the fire doors, you can obviously ask our fire marshal after, thanks. Okay, moving on, again, general fund, capital equipment projects, light duty reserve. This is for three, these are for three trucks, so they're not like cars. These are, these are three light duty trucks in DPW. The cost for that is roughly just under 13,000 every year. We're also going to be replacing, and there's pictures of this, the 2001 John Deere tractor. When we go to purchase a new tractor, we purchase it off the state, out of the state bid or source well. The one we have, there's pictures on the following page, we'll get to that, is worth a couple thousand dollars at best. We will usually recapture that at trade-in. So when we trade, we'll dump that old tractor. Also, construction, drainage, construction and design. This is something we build in every year. It's for unexpected drainage repairs on all our roads. It also incorporates the mini-engineering. So if there's engineering costs and let's say, you know, you know, a covert fails or something and we got to replace it, it also includes the engineer. We're not digging into the town's operational engineering budget, but we'll get it out of there. And there is a lot of DPW in here and while we're at it, a lot of public safety. Our DPW director, Scott Lappin, and Chief Lightell are both here to assist. Here is the tractor, she's an old leader. Again, the the consultant report, 10 to 12 years lifespan on these before you start to look at replacement. What I say this was in 01, so we've outrun that by a decade or two years, so we're getting there. All right, capital projects funded by other sources. And so each one of these will have, I'll explain to where we're getting them. Replacement of roadside mower. So this is the big one. And this is the big tractor that you see driving around the roads trimming down the brush that grows along the sides of the roads. It's a pretty technical piece of equipment. The cost is around 300,000. This is, there's the tractor and the arm that goes out and actually cuts and it's pretty sophisticated, again, sophisticated piece of equipment. The one we currently have is 14 years old, it has 9,000 hours on it. Again, the consultant report on this had it replaced every 10 years. We're at year 14 heading into 50. The replacement of a truck number 21, it's a 2008 Mack truck on the highway division. Again, that'll be likely beyond a state bid. It's beyond being refurbished, it's in poor condition. We will likely at best get a, get four to $5,000 for this truck on trade. Again, we have outlasted the recommend, recommendation from the consultant by six years. It's frequent for repairs and time to replace. We, and I'll have some pictures as we move forward of each of these items. We're replacing our wood chipper. So that's our wood chipper, you know, we have, we need it sometimes actually on the road and for maintenance around parks. And we also have a, some land up off a Baxter to restore a lot of when we do repairs of wood, there's brush. And so we need that chipper for maintenance. The one we currently have is in 1994, that puts it at about 30 years old. We'd be lucky to get a thousand dollars for it. It is in disrepair, it needs to be wrenched on all the time. And the cost of a new one is about 75,000. I don't think we'll get anything for trade. We might have to just put that on Gov. Deals or something along those lines. The replacement of truck number 84, 2007 F250, about 80,000, 17 years old, 131,000 miles. Now, you don't, you, you, these are, these trucks are used every day, used in a working capacity. It's not regular miles that a regular citizen is going to put on a truck. So these things are pulling trailers, they're, they're, they're doing work all the time. They also have a lot of hours on them as they, you know, sometimes are sit idle or running while we're using them. So to say 131,000, obviously, we're going to start having to make a lot of repairs and you'll see a picture of the truck. It makes sense to replace it again, and the consultant said this one's 17 years old, 10 to 12 years on these, these, these pieces of equipment. That's the, that is the old roadside mower. Again, it's requiring a lot of repair, very technical piece of equipment. The tractor is likely easier to repair, but the arm as well is, is also needs technical repair at its time. Truck 21, as you can see, we're not going to get a whole lot, it's, it's pretty tattered. There's the 1994 wood chipper. Again, our director, DPW director doesn't think we'll get anything for it other than going out to surplus somewhere in accordance with our surplus policy. There's truck 80, there's truck 84. If you look on the picture on the right, on the left, you can see some of the rot starting to occur around the fenders and under the door. Underneath is even worse, but if you look in the back, you're going to start to see some serious rust on the equipment back. All right. It moves, moving forward with funding by other sources, public safety. Replacement of firefighter protective gear. Each person's equipment basically needs to be replaced every 10 years or after a certain amount of washing. I will, I will give our chief a lot of grief on replacing darn near everything except for this. I will never say no to our safety equipment for our firefighters and our volunteers, our volunteer personnel as well. Yeah, that's about 70,000. Steel, $30,000 for steel beam installation in station 240. That is the firehouse in the center of town. That there's a, there's now a squad truck in there that responds to the highway. Squad truck is bigger than the trucks that were in there beforehand. Chief Lightell got, was, got some engineering done and to expand the, expand the area so that the truck fits in there. Basically, you need a shoehorn to get it in there right now. So this will make it a little easier for the, for the firefighters to walk around the truck in the station because it just eats up the whole area in there now. And then a replacement of trуть. These are, everything I'm talking about here, let me stop for a second and pause. Everything we're paying for here is paid for out of our ambulance reserve fund. And so that, that's money that is recouped based on, you know, say there's an accident on the highway, we can send out a bill. So this is basically paid for by money that Chief Lightell and his staff have earned on their own and charged out for. Replacement of two trailers, one's a dive trailer. It was, it was donated a long time ago and the, and a rehab trailer, both totaling around 70 grand to replace both of them. The rehab trailer is multipurpose, has heat, it has air conditioning. If we're on scenes somewhere in a freezing cold fire, we can put firefighters in there, we can put residents in there, anybody in there. Again, it's, it's something good to have, you know, with a fire, I'm sorry, fire alarm in the high school the other night. It was freezing during the basketball game. If all else fails, we can drive something like that there, start putting people inside. So it's, it's time to replace both of those, about 70,000. All right, board of education, this is going to be paid for out of C, CNRE. And these are TIS window sash replacements at the middle school. There's, I believe, windows leaking there and I think a safety issue as well. And then parks and rec, replacement of the basketball courts. This, this is a big one, this is non-referendum debt. Our basketball courts are well-used when in halfway decent repair. The one at Herring Cove is a disaster and it needs, it needs replacement and not being used much as you'll see because it's just a disaster. The one at Crandall's is still used a lot, but certainly it's old and in need of replacement. The Herring Cove was put in, the Herring Cove basketball court was put in around 2000-ish. It's, and it's been refurbished and repaired many times by DPW. You see, it's, it's just falling apart and, you know, basketball is important that the service be somewhat decent. The one at Crandall's was put in there in 1972, first one in 72, refurbished or replaced around 82 and resurfaced a couple of times since then. We are going to pave them with asphalt and we expect the length of repairs to be, or the length of lifespan of it to be about 20 to 30 years. With, you know, obviously, maintenance, proper maintenance done by our DPW. So they'll do crack sealing and such for those two courts. We have a lot of fields in town and there really hadn't been a schedule of how to replace and repair those fields, all the baseball fields, all, all the football fields, soccer fields, softball fields, everything. And it was kind of loosey-goosey and as to when we would, we would fix them. That was uncomfortable for me. So I had Bruce Watt work with the recreational advisory board, DPW, Dr. Willet, and get a consensus and a schedule on when to and how to replace these fields. Everyone believed the girls' softball field at the Talon Middle School was the one in most dire need of help. We went out and looked and if you walk from the infield to the outfield, there was a drop, probably, you know, six inches or so drop in grade as you walk from, from the infield to outfield, maybe even more than that. If you're going, walking backwards on a fly ball, I don't know, say a shallow fly ball from the infield to the outfield and there is a dip in the ground, you are going to get injured, fall down, get hurt and it's dangerous. And that, again, was, was something Dr. Willet brought to my attention, as did Director Lappin. This is the first field on our scheduled maintenance. It's going to cost about 30 grand. So the, the beef of that cost is a, is fencing and then materials that need to be brought in, dirt and such, the fencing's, you know, beat the heck, you know, the kids, as they're warming up, sometimes they'll gun the baseball or softball at the fence and it starts getting beat up or they'll hit a baseball against the fence, we try to discourage it. The pitches go to the backstop, beat the heck out of the fence, so the fencing is the main one. If you, council, you remember, you approved through ARPA, a new softball field sign for the girls' softball field. So we, it's going to be, it's going to be a great facility for our girls', our girls' softball here in town. As you remember, with ARPA, we, we put about 75,000 or so towards baseball or softball as a little league came and it was important that we include softball and keep things level. With the, the boys' baseball little league and we've done a good job in our book committee and thanks, Colleen. We kept that level for both and thank you, Bruce Watt as well. There's Herring Cove, I mean, there's, you know, there's a dip and a crater in there, puddles, you know, half-quart at best now at this point. We have made a lot of improvements up here, however. And there is now a pickleball court, brand new, right next to it. There is, it's, it's, I don't think it's entirely ADA, but man, it's close, I'd love to go test it. We did as best we could to get as close to ADA, walk away from the parking lot to the basketball and pickleball courts. We have some funding out of the grant that paid for the pickleball court. I believe she got that on a steep grant. I believe she got that on a steep grant, Megan Masa, who just, just brings in a ton of money through our grants program. We have money left over for lighting up there. So we are li- looking at doing lighting up here. For both the basketball and the uh in Herring Cove. And we have lighting. Uh, and you'll see down the road, we're going to try to get Crandall's, which is still the old hot lights. It's it's, we're going to switch over to LED at Crandall's down the road. But uh Bruce Watt, our director of recreation, is able to control those, basically. Is that from your phone, Bruce? Can you control the things? Yep, phone or computer, you can control when the lights go on, when they go off. Um, so uh, it's a great improvement to Herring Cove, a great improvement to that end of town with with now the um. With now the pickleball court and hopefully, you know, the basketball court should do approve this plan. Um, it's going to be great uh for Herring Cove. You'll see down the road, Herring Cove, or no, it's a river park that has the baseball field next. Uh, which is right there in that same end of town, uh, is is the next field, I believe, down the road to get to get repaired. Um, and while we're talking about field repairs, how long, if we repair a field, Scott, how long do you think it lasts? Twenty years or so?
With maintenance.
With maintenance, yeah, about twenty years. The problem is they have those bags of of speedy dry that they put on the infield and over twenty years. Dumping the speedy dry on there, it builds up, up, up and up. And then, you know, again, the fences get uh beat to heck. So that's, that's kind of the process. And then, you know, the guy standing in center field there, you know, he ends up digging a hole. Uh, and it, the area becomes sunken. And so there's just, there's maintenance, but that that's how a field um gets beat up. And then you have those holes, you have those dips, you have those raises, and that's how our kids get injured. That ain't cool. All right, capital projects, again, funded by other sources. Um, the exterior lodge, cleaning and staining, we look to pay through, pay for that through a LOSE grant of uh fifty-two thousand dollars. Our lodge, which makes us um money as we we uh hold events there, is managed by uh Bruce Watt, our rec director, was built in nineteen ninety-one. Um, and only, and one side was cleaned and stained in two thousand and twelve. So the majority of the building decks outside and such. Uh, have not been touched since nineteen ninety-one. So it's obviously uh time to to get some stain on there. And again, it's it's a beautiful spot. Uh, we want to keep it looking nice because again, it does um does well for us in funding in the rec, what is it, well, the rec fund, Bruce, the money you make out of there?
Lodge has its own fund.
Lodge has its own fund, okay. Moving on, well, again, LOSE grant, state LOSE grant, we have, we're we're going to use twenty-five thousand dollars for the senior center uh oil tank. The the oil tank in this senior center is outside underground. You don't see that too much anymore. Uh, in fact, it's frowned upon by DEP. And should the tank become twenty-five years uh old, now they start. Requiring all kinds of uh costly inspections and such on a yearly basis. Uh, and now, and so we are, we want to get that out of, uh, out of the ground, have it above ground in a concrete tank. We look to spend about uh twenty-five thousand. Scott, what do you think the life ex- life expectancy of said tank would be?
Uh, they go, they, they go for a long time, probably thirty, forty years.
Okay, so we look, this is again, one time, but it's uh state LOSE grant. In our building that we're sitting in now, um, again, we want to use about fifty thousand dollars of LOSE money. You'll see this reoccurring. We want to start replacing uh windows and uh exterior doors uh in the building as some are, are starting to uh leaking and become in disrepair. Okay, um, again, looking at some uh capital projects funded by other sources, and this is on town administration. Again, thirty thousand, we talked about earlier, CNRE, to pay for our portion of the upgrades to the um Vernon Wild Water Pollution Plant. And the uh UPS switches for phone systems and servers. Uh, our financial director, uh, Yolita is going to uh explain what that is.
Thank you, um, thank you, Brian, but I ask.
Oh, Noreen's here. I forgot. Noreen, come on up. What is that? We have, we have a lot of tech coming up in this budget or in this plan over the next five years. So I asked Noreen, who is our tech expert, she's, she actually works in the finance department, but has taken off the tech stuff and she's someone we rely heavily on. So Noreen, in in, can you explain what the, in the year one here, UPS units uh for switches, phone systems and servers?
The UPS are battery backup systems for if and when we do go down, we do it in this building is is a rollover so that we don't lose connectivity. The switches are both, there's different kinds of switches, the core switches and the ones that keep us our daily activities for our phones and what have you going. So they, like everything else, have a life expectancy, so those need to be replaced. The server, the um switches that also keep us connected in our redundancy program that we have between the fire department and ourselves. Again, they would need to be replaced. A lot of the IT, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
A lot of the IT items, not just the switches and everything, a lot of them are. If not recommended, if not mandatory, then recommended for our cyber insurance, which we need, obviously, we need to have. So if we, I would that, we have had different insurance companies that. Have wanted to take us on because we haven't complied in different ways. So we really don't have a choice with a lot of the items.
Uh, we're, we're also planning to move to, is it office three sixty-five?
Yes.
Um, council will be happy to know that we won't, you won't have to delete. I assume that'll be a pretty light approval process for council, just based on that one thing alone. Let's see what the.
Let's see, let's work that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the, we, we are planning on.
So uh, we also have the uh TAR grant. Um, that's every year, about seventy thousand dollars. We combine that with thirty thousand out of operating. Uh, that's for different tree trimming around um around town. Our road improvements, we went to, we went to referendum in the fall. It 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 passed one point four million to continue with our plan for our street improvements. Uh, our pavement, uh, we also have, we add to that also the three hundred thousand or so, uh, forty-five from LOSE. And uh, two hundred and two hu- two hundred and sixty-eight thousand from the town aid road grant. Uh, again, Director Lappins here, if you have any questions or my finance team as well. Going to kind of start going faster now as we start to move um the years out. Again, you're going to see the water pollution control. IT course, which replacements, ignoring here, if you have any other questions on a lot of this IT stuff, document management. Um, NES replacement racks for hard drives and storage, and then, of course, the light duty vehicles. You'll see that every year that the, again, planning for our our vehicles. Uh, again, year two, uh, funding by the general fund, uh, funding on a general fund is replacement of the Talon High School stage floor. It's getting old. We had a uh an injury based on the wood, a pretty severe splinter injury uh to a student. So it's, you know, Dr. Willet's been asking for this for a long time. I've been pushing it out. Um, and so it's coming up now uh in year two. TMS and TIS locker locker replacement uh at a hundred and sixty dollars out of non-referendum debt. When we went and looked at both lockers, um, at TIS and uh TMS, they are really old, really tattered. Um, they, it's, they can't get uh replacement parts uh for them anymore. Uh, they look, obviously look like they've been, been beat up pretty good. So it's it's time for that. Uh, ninety thousand dollars for a TIS AI floor scrubber. And then uh a new discus and shot put area uh at at um the high school. And that's on the main track, you know, with the with the turf field. Uh, we have planned for, it says May referendum, but we're really, we're, we're actually discussing fall of twenty twenty-six. When there's the the uh governors to to coincide with the governor's reelection, election, a referendum. The main one, main part of that referendum will be the roof replacement um at TA, THS. Uh, I went up on the roof with Dr. Willet and Pete Stavra uh and looked at it. There's patches all over the place. Uh, we can keep pushing it out. Um, right now, we're pushing it out to twenty twenty-six, which means, which means it wouldn't get done until twenty twenty-seven if it passes referendum. Um, basically, we're going to have to replace it at some point. If the roof fails, it's going to create more expensive problems, obviously, within the school, uh, maybe close off portions of the school or worse. We have to pay for the roof at some point, and that's why we will look to look to um council. Uh, and everyone to support it in the community to pass uh the roof replacement. It's, it's, you know, it's not an if, it's when, and and it's going to be more and more expensive to uh make the repairs as they uh get, you know, older and older. Uh, again, I was up up there in October, I believe. There's this patches all over the place. Um, it's as old as the high school, uh, the roof is, so it's, it's becoming time. So there's, you'll see in here also um upgrades to the gym, uh, TIS and TMS and uh the cafes. We are looking actually at putting the turf field as the rating this year on the turf field came back very bad. And so we might push some of this stuff out um further, uh, the 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 TIS gym upgrades and such. Uh, the AC um upgrades to um to years out and get that turf field in there on uh the referendum instead. It's in discussion, but that's for next year's capital improvement plan. Right now, this is uh what we have uh in this plan. Again, bonded equipment, non-referendum debt, about six hundred and year two, about six hundred and uh forty-nine thousand or so. Uh, these are two, uh, this is, I'm sorry, one large-sized plow truck, a two thousand and eight international. Uh, again, well beyond the lifespan at a, at, again, an O eight of the ten to twelve-year recommendation. Uh, and replacement of a two thousand and seven loader uh in parks. That that loader uh has fifty-two hundred hours on it. We should have a pretty good trade-in, even though the, obviously, the prices, these are, this is a massive piece of equipment. Uh, we should have a pretty good trade-in, though we're looking at, uh, Director Lappin says about thirty-five to forty thousand on trade. Uh, public safety, replacement of service three forty, that is a uh basically a a flatbed truck. Uh, again, paid for out of uh Chief Laitel's own ambulance reserve fund. Uh, replacement of UTV two forty, there'll be discussion on that. But again, paid for out of uh Chief Laitel's ambulance reserve fund. Uh, public facilities, our fuel dispensing system, and in two years, we want to replace that. Uh, it's failing a lot at this point. It's becoming difficult, borderline impossible to get parts when it does fail. Uh, and this is the fuel system that fuels our trucks and and our emergency vehicles and such. So it's, it's time to plan to uh replace that. Uh, again, here's that fifty thousand again, and for the multi-year project for doors and windows um here at Hicks. Crandall's, the, the, the building at Crandall's, so the building at Crandall's um predates me on this earth. We know that it got, we know that it got bathrooms and septic system in nineteen sixty-eight. The building was already there at that point. John was spinning a yarn, Chief Laitel was spinning a yarn earlier, my father and his father responding to a burglary there. Um, some dispute as to who ate the candy, but we'll leave it there. Um, but that is an old building. Uh, needs to be replaced. Um, and and with the improvements we're making in Crandall's, the benefits that we've seen the town. Uh, the general morale of our citizens here in town, Crandall's is is really become a great focal point. Uh, we look to spend around a million dollars or so, um, with some of it being LOSE uh state grant. Uh, but non-referendum debt for the most part of it. Uh, and we look to do that. This is now two years out. We will not be, we are not intending on building a building from scratch. We are going to look at getting a prefab, pre-built building uh in an effort to save money. Uh, likely modest at best office space. Um, obviously, lockers and and a bathroom. And if you go in there now, any of you have been in there, the bathrooms, again, they are all of nineteen sixty-eight when you walk in there. Um, so it's, it's, it's time uh to replace that building. The tennis courts at Old Cathol Road, six tennis courts we have that are mainly used by the uh, that that is the Ted, that uh our school tennis um home court. Uh, but also the residents use it a lot. Uh, it is in uh very much in disrepair. We made an effort to repair some of the cracks a couple of years ago with grant money. Uh, it was largely unsuccessful uh and time to replace. In my discussions of replacing this, obviously, I think, do we need six courts up there? Um, and the answer is, as, you know, in in consultation with Bruce Watt, direct advisory board, research done by uh Bruce. In regards to what do all those towns have? Is there a standard based on population? How many courts does like, what's like the recreational standard for how many courts a town should have based on our population? There is none. Speaking with um our athletic director, he says. Um, you could have as, as few as one court, two courts, you know, four or six. Uh, six being the most that most towns have that he's seen. Uh, it's, he was very comfortable and thought it very appropriate to downsize to four courts there. Um, keep in mind, we have three multi-year use, but tennis courts at Crandall's as well with overnight uh lighting available. Uh, where, you know, a citizen can go to the court, turn the light on themselves and use them there. Those are brand new, that Megan achieved a grant for. Steep, was it right? For the, it was steep grant um that that we had paid for uh by the state. So um, we get a lot of complaints about the tennis courts at Old Cathol Road, especially from parents of students that uh play there uh during the games. And so it's time. Uh, we looked at um paving that. It doesn't make sense. We're going to, we're likely, hence the cost. Um, six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars uh non-referendum debt to replace uh those courts. Again, seventy thousand dollars you see every year for a tree trimming, that's a state grant, TAR grant. Um, various, you get the, the drainage and construction that uh that we have to pay for, again, state grant. Uh, pavement management, uh, state and uh grant, and then the referendum, prepare for pavement management for roads. Uh, again, moving on to year three, we have some IT with the, with the, um, obviously, sewer system. Uh, we have IT uh core switch replacements and Aruba wireless units. Um, Noreen's available, should you have any questions, I think I. It's not my area of expertise, but it's certainly hers. Word of education, you'll see in our articulating lift. Uh, a used one they want to purchase at about uh eighty thousand dollars or so. Uh, THS cafeteria replacements, again, original to school. I went and looked uh at the tables with uh Pete Stavra and and Dr. Willet. Uh, they're getting uh pretty beat up, about seventy-five thousand dollars coming out of our CNRE fund uh for the the replacement. Um, we went and looked at the boilers, I don't know what was happening there, but um Pete Stavra says it's time. Uh, the repairs are starting to um add up and and it's time to replace them. And should a boiler fail, you know, during during the winter ti- time, obviously, much of the school year is during the winter, uh, it's going to be a problem. They also want to spend forty thousand dollars uh for a TIC elevator closed loop door operator. Um, Rob Dabika, do you know anything about that?
I know what it is.
What is it?
It's a safety device. So if you were to step in the elevator and you were going up to the second or third floor, you press the button. You expect the doors to close. This, this is the device that ensures that those doors do in fact close. You're not traversing the floors and.
Obviously, uh, needed and required. Um, Dr. Willet has priorities tied that to to year three. Uh. Replacement of a, uh, again, full-size uh truck, you're going to see that, you know, we're trying to also, while we're doing this, as recommended by the um consultant. Is to get them to be all the same brand. We're going to, you know, obviously, if we buy new, as best we can, getting them off the state grid to get them all to be the the same type of uh truck. Is international where we're staying on those? And so we would want, we would want to stay with uh international. It also helps our mechanics and everything not to be switched into different types of uh manufacturers. Also looking at replacing a two thousand and twelve, and as as we're looking three years out to a twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. Uh, so that'll be well beyond its life expectancy. Uh, two thousand and twelve F two fifty, everyday work truck. Replacement of ambulance five forty. Now, again, you know, these, these ambulance should be be replaced every six years. The problem is, it's a disaster trying to get an ambulance and and it's taken years, literally, from when we order it to when we um receive it. So uh, it it takes some fine tuning to start planning uh for their replacements. This is coming out of um John's ambulance uh reserve fund too. So Chief Laitel's uh ambulance reserve fund. Um, the replacement of an engine tank three forty, which uh I'm sure we'll discuss more down the road, already been refurbished. So uh, as as we look to, we we don't just take the truck and, you know, once, once it starts to get beat up, uh, buy a new one. Uh, we try to um refurbish it and it will replace the pumps, you know, anything that's that, any parts that need to be replaced. This is beyond refurbished, and John and I sit down once a year. We go through each piece of equipment. How many times has it been refurbished? Does it need to be replaced? Can we get a used one? Do we need it? Uh, all questions um that uh John, Chief Laitel has to um answer and uh does. And he fights uh very hard for the best uh equipment that we can have to keep our uh residents safe. Parks and Recreation, Ellie, as I spoke earlier, um L E D lighting for Crandals. Uh two hundred and ten thousand dollars is roughly what it would cost. We'll try to get some good prices when the time comes, but again, these are, these are the old style um. Lights that we have up there, and it's massive and and quite a cost, and we have an analysis. Um of what what the electric's costing us in replacement. Um and that will come out of our utility fund. Lisa, you want to explain what that is?
Yeah, we did, why?
No, the utility fund.
Oh, yes, um. Several years ago, we had set up the uh utility internal service fund, and most of it was to account for. The whole S go project that we had done for the renovations at the various. Schools and town buildings. With that, that fund is still in existence, and it was supposed to help pay for with savings from utilities. To help pay for the debt and all that. Um recently, we changed all that. The fund still exists, and what happens is each year, the town contributes to um the fund for all of our utilities. And so does the Board of Education. If there's any savings whatsoever. Um at the end of the year, it goes into each side. If the Board of Ed has savings, it. It goes into like a fund balance that is attributed to the Board of Ed. The other side is for the town. We also had a settlement um that went into that fund a while back from Honeywell. So all that was contributed to the fund, and now what we have is a policy which is gonna need to be updated. But the funds can be used um uh if you keep a certain reserve in there for, in case. Utilities go up or down more than what your budget is, at least it can help offset um some of those factors. But any significant savings that accumulate and also from that settlement. Um can be used towards capital projects, and that was part of the policy that was approved between the Board of Education and the town.
Thanks, Lisa. Uh you'll see uh field renovation, that is uh a baseball uh field up at uh River Park. And uh Director Lappin and I went out there in the fall. Someone's gotten fastballs and hit balls against the fence. It's fallen apart. Or the field is chewed up, starting to have the same uh raise in the infield to the outfield now that we talked about. Uh and based on the pla- plan to replace the field, it's not every year, as you'll see, um but we've based on the condition they're in. Uh Bruce Watt did his best he could to try to responsibly plan uh when to do this and when we get. Uh what finance says. Again, uh three years out, the um again, the Hicks building, windows and doors, multi-year project, fifty thousand dollars. Uh rec center uh roof replacement, uh two hundred and forty five thousand, that's the the rec center behind Parker Place. Uh the roof is is uh getting old and in in getting repaired and in need of replacement. Uh we also have our elections there, the daycare there, the the, what do we call it? Talentikes. Um is it a daycare? Is that accurate?
Preschool.
Preschool. Um we have the preschool there, very successful. Um the building needs to be maintained. Uh we look to achieve that two forty five on a non-referendum debt, that same tree trimming grant, seventy thousand dollars. Range and road pavement management and road improvement. So I'm I'll kind of get moving now into year four. If I've already talked about it, it's an every-year type of thing, um I'll leave it alone. Again, I T switches and I T exchange server, a lot of I T in here that is getting more and more, so we gotta stay on top of it. Board of Education, the Birch Grove uh kitchen floor, it's getting uh pretty chewed up and unsafe. Uh while I'd like to replace that, I'm sorry, Doctor Will would like to replace that in four years, along with the T M S roof. Um and we'll pay for that out of non-referendum debt and and seven hundred thou- seven hundred non-referendum roughly, seven from the school construction grant. We look to replace the T H S uh track uh replacement. This is gonna uh. Recommended to be done in coordination with the turf project, so again, as we talked about that um. Referendum coming up in fall of twenty six. That it's all in all likelihood, the turf field track and roof would fall into one. Um but again, I'll have to work with uh Yolit as as closely as I can to make sure we're doing that. The spend, spending uh and and planning debt as responsibly as possible. Uh T H S closed loop door operator. Again, that's the same thing you were talking about, Rob, before, as Rob explained earlier. Um replacement of a four years out, so we're looking at uh twenty twenty nine. Uh we're replacing a two thousand and fifteen backhoe. Uh it's a major expense at three hundred thousand. Uh replacement of again, a large truck as well, uh three hundred and forty five thousand. These are big, large dump trucks also with plows in the front. Four years out, replacement, oh I gotta keep going here, sorry. They go past it. Oh, way behind. I'm sorry. Uh replacement of ambulance six forty, same thing. We have to plan for these. The recommendation uh is every six years or so. To replace the ambulances, and then keep in mind, it's taken a whole bunch of time uh to get a new one. Uh and again, we we await the um consultant report on uh the equipment that we need, so before we place it, we ensure that uh we need it. Uh but this is the plan as it stands now. The artificial turf field replacement, you can see that's in the plan at four years, but again, we got, we got a, it got raided uh pretty bad. Um I'd hoped to keep it out four years, um but we're looking to replace it maybe again uh with the referendum. Everything else is uh talked about. Camera replacements, that those are security cameras, Scott, or ignoring me, but I believe those are security cameras. Uh thirty two thousand, the ones we have are pretty old. Um five years from now, they're gonna be in in I T, very old. And some general stuff out of the uh the Board of Ed, five years out, uh we could, um there's some flexibility here. With Doctor Will, but these are basically all things that he's gonna need to replace uh down the road. If we're talking through them. Uh classroom upgrades, T H S business uh classroom furniture, equipment. Uh T M S technology upgrades, science laboratory technology upgrades, uh T I S uh technology upgrades. Uh a lot of uh technology upgrades uh five years out. Capital equipment, we're looking at the replacement of an O seven F five fifty truck, uh that's, that's not, that's bigger than a pickup truck with a small dump. At a hundred and uh four thousand, well beyond uh what the consultant said, how long we should uh keep, keep them. Uh you'll see the more, more uh protective gear for uh John's firefighters. Uh and replacement of service uh four forty, which is a light duty service truck in, in the last consultant. Or they did recommend that John have more um light duty uh service trucks, so they're not, not sending the big trucks out uh to every single call. Uh obviously, that's a good, a good idea, um and that's hence the 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 need for replacement of uh service two forty in nineteen ninety. I don't know what field, what's, what's the next field, Bruce, um after? Okay, there's two baseball fields at River Park, put it at the same time. Uh this is five years out, whichever, the the one that, the further one. If you're standing toward the park, you might the further one away, uh that that's which this one would be. Um. Are you can see our animal control facility in year five. Curse here. The animal control facility in year five, we are applying for a steep, steep grant this year. Um and hope to achieve that, well, there will, there will be a match. Um you know, somewhere between two and three hundred thousand, the town will will pay, but the majority of the animal control facility um. Will be paid through, hopefully through state grant, if I can work her magic. Uh either way, we have, if we don't get the grant, I have it in our five-year plan, if we if to replace it. We are working currently with other towns. Um again, thanks to uh Megan. Uh and Mike Damato, we are working with other towns to have a regional animal control uh staff with Wellington. Ashford, Stafford, and Talon so far. Uh all three very positive, we just had a meeting um with with. Mansfield lingering around um, see, you know, basically just kind of dipping their toe in the water of how much they want to get involved. They, they are a much bigger town with many more calls and and um they're putting in a new facility as well. Uh but we're working with Prague on the um regionalization of staffing for sure. Um and then we i- if we do regionalize, if we do have to pay for an animal control facility, we'll work that uh likely in with the other towns. Uh to help offset our cost of uh doing that. Um. You'll see, again, a much, many, many of the same other things with the tar and tree trim and such, so um. That is it uh for the five-year presentation. Uh attached, you know, in your package, there's some schedules and such. Uh moving forward, but and some charts, but any questions, um we're all here uh to answer, so.
Um we also have Barry Bernard online.
Yep, our our, yes, our debt council, uh if you have any questions next. When our debt, do we need, does he have anything he wants to say?
Well, he had a presentation here.
Okay, so let's go to Barry here, give me one second. There he is. Gotcha, Bear.
Hello, how are you?
Oh, we have a speaker problem again. Um, okay, go ahead, Bear, as best you can.
Okay, I guess you can't hear me too well, I mean uh.
Everyone online, and and I'm sure the 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 TV can hear you, but um in in the room, it's a little difficult, but council, you can hear, so that's most important for you to hear. Go ahead, Bear.
Okay, I I think you all have a a copy of that package there um. For the debt management, uh uh let me see if I could uh share it here.
We have it, yep.
So on uh on. On page two of the presentation, uh towards the bottom, you see that the capital plan totals twenty five point six million dollars. And um in, we have it broken out in years, one through five, issuing short-term bands and also a series of bonds. And uh if we go to page three, uh before we we look at that impact of that, of that capital plan. The twenty five million dollars, we look at three major factors. We look at overall interest rates. On on page three shows um a chart that shows the long-term treasury bond yield. It it, it's a busy chart, uh rates peaked in nineteen eighty one. They bottomed out in twenty twenty, rates have been up over the last three years. But but the story on page three is that even though rates are up from their all-time lows, they're still very, very manageable. Uh on page four is um a chart that shows short-term interest rates. This would be the rate on on the short-term bands. Um several years ago, they were near zero. The Fed has moved short-term rates up. They're starting to come back down again. Um so uh long-term rates are up a little bit, short-term rates are up a little bit. We go to page five, we see a little bit more information on interest rates, but the story with interest rates, for the town to borrow a ten-year. Uh twenty-year bond issue is about three and a half percent, which is really not that bad. So overall, interest rates are are not really a problem for the town right now. Uh the next factor that we look at on page six, just like all of us, we have a credit score, the town has a credit score. Uh the good news for the town is that both Standard and Poor's and Fitch rate the town the highest rating possible of triple A. This means whenever the town issues bonds, the town will be able to borrow at the lowest possible rate. Congratulations to the town and the discipline uh uh over the years to maintain this above-average bond rating. I really think the town is really punching above its weight class to maintain those high bond ratings. On page uh seven, we see the main factors that go into determining that bond rating. Your management team, the economy, the demographics, the financial performance, the debt management. And your uh relatively small, long-term liabilities. So all those come together on on page eight. You see kind of a part, a pie chart that looks at all those different rating metrics. And all those come together in such a good way, the town does have those triple A bond ratings. So interest rates are favorable, your bond rating is the highest possible. Next factor we look at on page nine, I think is probably one of the most important slides here tonight. Those blue bars. Are the town's existing debt. Bonds that have been issued in the past, and if you look at those blue bars, they amortize very aggressively. Very, very aggressively. You see some large drop-offs uh going into the future, and that will help to mitigate any new debt service. And if we go to page ten, we see that based on the assumptions we have in place. You have those blue bars there, we have those uh colored uh bars on top of the blue uh bars, meaning um. With the town's current debt plan of roughly twenty five million dollars, the town can issue those bonds. And not have any impact at all on the current debt level, which is kind of unprecedented. The town's in a really good position. The debt's amortizing aggressively, you have a high bond rating. All that debt could come on, and even with issuing those new bonds, the debt actually goes down a little. That's why I think it would make sense for the town to consider allocating, instead of decreasing the debt service. Um line item that they allocate, keep that flat, and actually. Allocate some of the current debt budget to what we call pay-as-you-go capital. Because once you lower that debt service budget, it's gonna be that much harder to get it back for future capital needs. So again, the twenty five million dollars can be issued with no impact to the current debt ratio. Um and if we look at page uh eleven, you you see that uh um issued out. The roads could be issued over fifteen years, not twenty years, but fifteen years. All the other capital projects could go out twenty years. And you could basically keep that flat at its current level, as it is right now, of roughly five million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And the final uh chart is just kind of a summary again on page twelve. I won't read through them all, but if you look at the the third bullet from the bottom. The town's existing debt amortizes very aggressively. That helps to mitigate the impact of all new debt coming on, and still allows the town to allocate some of that debt budget. To kind of pay as you go capital. So uh again, to wrap up, I think it's a very positive story. I think the town could um. Handle that that debt uh plan with no increase to the current debt budget. So I think it's all very, very positive for the town.
Thanks, Barry. So that that's that, that concludes uh our presentation. We are here for uh any questions. Uh as you can see, thanks to Council now and Council in the past, uh we have stayed within our guardrails. Uh been responsible in our good position not to be mired in debt. Too much uh in the future and looked at a lot of it uh in in pretty good shape. Uh so, I have any questions?
Yes, so we're gonna, we'll go to the public first.
Sure.
So again, just a reminder, we will, um in a moment, I'll entertain a motion for a public hearing. Um we'll let the public go, um and then we'll open it up to the council to ask their questions, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion to open a public hearing for the consideration of the proposed five-year capital plan. So, is there a second? Looks like we're a hybrid tonight, so there will call vote, there's no discussion. See who's online. Oh, okay. Um Counselor Butler. You can unmute if you're able. I'm asking her to unmute, as you can see.
She's a co-host, Brian, so she should, she should be able to unmute.
Okay, um and can you, Mike, and the 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 phone number one is Mary Lee, can you unmute her? Or make her a um co-host, sorry?
This are waiting, who are those in the room?
They're both, they're both ready.
Counselor Butler? Yeah, Counselor B B?
Hi.
All right, I'm an I as well, so the public hearing is opened. Um do we have any public that would like to speak on the five-year capital plan? Please raise your hand, I don't think we have anyone in the room. Any public, going once. Twice. Right, well, it looks like that's a.
Took us longer to open.
Yeah. So that will go to um counsel, so I'll try to do this somewhat orderly. I've uh two rounds, um so. It's it's a little strange how the agenda is open. Someone have any questions, like it has started.
Sure.
Um truck number twenty one or just one of the trucks is, did we also approve one of those in Arpa or was that just different?
If we approved it in Arpa, it's a different truck, for sure.
There's a couple heavy duty ones that were there, smaller trucks, I didn't know. This is an additional DPW truck.
This is beyond, this is beyond Arpa, anything in Arpa, um we, the trucks we've paid for. Um in in Arpa were taken out of our.
Right.
Plan, so they wouldn't still be in it, and so these are, these are additional.
Okay, so we've, in those ones, are they on order, we already have them or?
They're delivered.
Yeah, so what? Yeah, that's all I really have for right now.
So around the room, councillor Shade, you have any questions?
Um sure. So on the TMS auditorium, thirty eight thousand place seats, is is anybody, or has the has the board considered? Perhaps not using that auditorium anymore since we have a very nice auditorium at high school, why keep putting money into this auditorium? If we can just switch to using the high school auditorium, uh so. Maybe repurpose that, that requires much lower maintenance costs and uh future repair costs. For that, for the building, uh just seems like a lot of money we could spend on something that's probably not used a heck of a lot when we've got a perfectly good one that they could really share. Um also considering that building was closed for years and nobody had a concern about. Auditoriums not being used, so. Something to think about.
Go ahead, I I alright, okay, um I don't want to speak for Walt, I don't see him on here, so I will uh speak to what I know, because I I. I asked similar questions, certainly not about, one, they do have a good amount of assemblies there. There's a, I believe, a school play, uh music uh as well. We've had public hearing there. Was the. Street racer, road, street takeover, didn't we have our street takeover um meeting there, do you remember that, John? Yes, we did, in the state police, that's where it was, um it's used a lot.
Well, look, it wasn't there.
I don't think they want to bus kids from middle school to the high school during the day to use their auditorium uh for an event. I don't have the numbers of assemblies there.
I'm curious to know that, because I mean.
We can, I can get that for you in explanation for a while, in in short order, um I'm I'm fairly certain, but. I think one more thing, you know, I hate to pay for anything, um Joe. This, in my humble opinion, having been there with Walt multiple times and. Looking at the seats, been there with with my daughter for multiple uh events as well when she was uh in that school. It's time to replace the seats, I don't know that we want to shutter a, you know, ten thousand square foot. Area um in the school that is uh literally infrastructure, the slanted floor, the seats and everything as to, you know, what. What will we do with that dead space, um if we did close this, I I understand that, but I will be happy to get from Dr. Willet. Let's say, number of events uh that we have there and it can and would it be a consideration to um. Shutter it and move the kids to. Move the events to the high school auditorium.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I I just think it's worth the question you're asking, uh because if there's twenty events, thirty events per year, it's a heck of a lot. For uh for the fact that we have a really good auditorium at high school, so. It's just a way that the board considers. Um it's just a a a question uh about the cost of those fire doors, so there's a hundred and twelve thousand, how many doors? Does that replace a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, I'm just curious.
I don't want the number of doors, but it took in the whole um, the whole district, so it's all in the schools.
Yeah, just.
I don't know.
Curious how many doors that is, because it seems like a lot of money for doors.
So the double, so the double doors between all the big hallways.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Automatic closing ones.
I just curious to get our numbers to see what the cost per door is.
Got it, got it.
Also, light duty vehicle reserve, I just want clarification, so this this sounds like we're just building up a cash balance. Um and where's that cash balance stay? What fund is that cash balance that we see building up year over year for these years?
We have it in the capital fund, there's a capital account that um we keep track of it. And then as the vehicles come due, then we purchase a lot of that.
Okay, so there's a specific capital account fund that just goes into. Oh, on the roadside in Moore, so we probably have a John Deere's intention by another John Deere, have we priced out?
We've looked at others, we've looked at New Holland's, uh John Deere, you know, when the time comes, we'll see which one. Gives us the best price for what we need.
Okay, state then?
State, state bid or, you know, uh some of the consortium like Swarswell or something like that.
So this three hundred and four thousand, is that based on like a John Deere, replacing basically the same deal?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a possibility. Basketball courts, I'm looking at a big ticket. Next year's capital, so we're talking about basketball. Crandall and Heron Cove is over half a million dollars, have we done any kind of a study to determine? The actual usage that these courts are getting, because it seems like, you know, the times are changing, I don't know if there's many kids running off playing basketball at public. Courts as much as it used to be, away with one court versus two courts, so we're like building pickleball courts and. So I just, I just think we should maybe do a utilization study before we upgrade both courts, if that's possible.
How would you want to pay for that?
Study?
And and, okay. Do we vote on that, or what do you want, what do you want to do?
We have our, like Joe said, Bruce, have we done any, if, right, or Bruce, have you, we done anything similar to that?
We could ask the recreation advisory board their opinion, but I know what it's gonna be.
You know, like how many people use the fields and stuff. No, I was just wondering.
The Crandall's court for sure gets used all the time.
I was just wondering if.
I just don't drive by Heron Cove that often. And it's just, it's. How we know at this point, because the thing's in such disrepair. At some point, I have to assume that the town saw a need to put a basketball court in that part there. Uh I wasn't here when that happened, I don't know if either of you were.
Twenty five years.
And now there would have to be a need to, you know, to say that we don't need it, I know that we do get requests. To have that um court upgraded, especially those in the Kate Lane uh neighborhood. I guess that's on town council to decide whether we need it or not.
So, I just put, put in my two cents up on that, I I'll I'll say a couple things, I I live fairly close to there, I drive by a lot in the summer. I do see it get used quite a bit, I know that's a hector the life, but you know, for what it's worth.
Yeah.
Uh also, um I'm just kind of thinking, oh, oh, Joe, like if we. If we just decided not to repair it, I mean, it looks like it's kind of a liability the way it is with the cracks in it. Like, would we have to consider paying to?
Yeah, no, we'd have to get rid of it, yes.
Yeah, just just just, you know, thinking, we had, we would have to think about that. As far as doing a study or researching that, um. I don't know if I'd make a decision about that tonight, I think that'd be something.
These are just questions I'm raising, as I go through the capital budget process, we're not passing this budget tonight.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Just something to think about.
We did have a skating rink there.
Yeah.
To what, to what you're saying, it wasn't, it wasn't used, became expensive, uh we don't, no longer have a skating rink there. Uh so we do make those considerations um when doing this, there's now a, a much cheaper to run pickleball court. Uh where said skating rink was, so with no maintenance, uh and we have the successful temporary ring. Um in shallow left field of the men's softball field at Crandall's.
Okay, um and then just look at the size of this thing, it's quite large, similar to the tennis courts, you know, if we do decide to keep it, would it make any sense?
Also a very question, I will, I, we can ask the rec, Bruce, can you, can you put that on the next rec advisory? Do we need a a place that big, that that is definitely a fair question. Yes. I mean, because the one at Crandall's, which gets used, I would say a lot more, is a single court, full court, right? Is that a, is that just one full court?
It's a one full court.
Oh, it's one full court. They got the hazies going on this uh to get more, so you can get two little short games going.
So, um how old's roof on on the high school, which is kind of goes with the high school, so how old is that?
When was the high school built?
Two thousand and six, I think.
Yeah, oh six.
And what's the, what's the approximate? Life of that roof, do we know?
The of the next roof or this roof?
This roof.
I want to say it was around twenty years or so.
So we haven't quite hit twenty years yet.
Yes, but I don't have that, but I'll, I will be happy to get that for you.
Yep, doesn't work.
I know it took kind of a beating. With the snow blowers, when Uncle Sam had the National Guard show up. And it got beat up.
And then, so we're we're replacing a ninety thousand dollar floor scrum, what what are we using currently? Why does that have to be replaced?
I don't, I do not have that information, I'll be happy to get it for you.
And then we're talking about putting in a new shot put area, I'm just curious as to how many shot put people we have that we need to spend sixty seven thousand dollars to put a shot put.
Regular part, the 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 track team, um the track and field uh team, same, i- i- in their plan is the um. Down the road, the high jump and oval pit um as well, uh that's, that was in, that was in the plan, that got pushed back, uh it's because we pushed it out.
So do they not shot put currently, is this kind of like a new thing they do?
No, they do, but it's pretty chewed up.
Oh, so we do have a shot.
Yes.
Area, so it's just redoing.
Yeah. And again, down the road, you're gonna see the oval and high jump.
Um and then the fuel dispensing system for forty thousand dollars, I guess the question is, like, how much maintenance do we have to do on this every year? And have we ever done a study just to see if we should just buy locally as opposed to having our own dispensing system?
As far as purchasing fuel.
Yeah.
We pay a lot less for our fuel than if we bought um you know, like local station. We're paying, we're paying two dollars and s- uh seventy cents, I believe.
Or like diesel?
For gas, indeed, the diesel's a little bit more, yeah.
Two, how much, two seventy?
Two seventy five, I believe it is, for for gasoline, and I think the diesel went up to, or it dropped, but I believe that's. I don't have my operating budget here, but I believe that's right around the same price, maybe ten cents a gallon more.
So we done any kind of a study to determine like what the cost savings is? Uh if we, like how many gallons times what we pay for fuel versus what you'd have to pay at retail?
We, we, we fuel all of the, all DPW vehicles.
No, I know, I know we fuel a lot of stuff, do we have any idea of like how many gallons we're using per year?
We do. We have a chart that tells us what we have, I again, I don't have that with me.
Yeah, I'm just be curious to see how much of a savings it is versus the, versus spending forty thousand dollars to. To sort of redo this, and I don't know what the annual maintenance costs are on this as well, just to, just see what the benefit is, I mean.
Yeah.
I'm sure it could be, I'd just be curious to see the numbers before moving something like this.
I think the logistics of trying to fuel up at a different location, we s- we fuel up all the school buses there as well.
Okay.
So you try to fuel the school buses twice a day. During the night, when we're all in snow, things like that, that makes it.
Logistically.
I don't know many towns that don't have their own, none, that don't have their own dispensing system, but I have to assume. When we bought said system or went to said system, part of that was to be able to have that analysis. Um but they would have done the cost, I, again, I have to assume, none of us were here then.
Right.
Um that they, that they went to that, and where I've worked, the state, City Hartford, um all have these types of uh systems.
Okay. I'm just curious to see what it's saving, it's a, it'd be a good thing to point out, because if we're spending forty grand, we'll say, yeah, we're saving. You know, ten thousand a year by doing this, it's then it's worth it. Put people use, um test courts, I had the same question you did, um and it's really just how. How often is, again, it's a six hundred thousand dollars we're spending, so we just want to make sure that. Getting our money's worth, is it worth it to have both sets of courts? Um can we drop down a few courts? If we, if we have to, depending on the usage, especially because the pickleball is becoming the new thing and. Less people are playing tennis, does it make sense that there's new courts to be trying to do, if we're putting new pickleball courts in several places, so I think we just. Need to do some.
We're going down.
Oh, you're articulate, oh, what's an articulating lift on the Board of Education for eighty thousand dollars?
That is something, the ceilings that in like, say, the auditorium, the gym, um around the school are are too high, or any sort of maintenance. Around the school that's too high, uh they would use a lift that be shared by a- all the schools. Uh it's been looked into in the past of sharing it with other um municipalities, uh school systems. Um it just, it just never really works, so that they they figure the best way, instead of. Um paying somebody to commit or renting one, is which I believe they currently do, is to have this lift, um. To have this left and buy it used, uh to save money to have it.
So how's stuff being maintained currently?
They rent.
Right, and they borrow from us too.
Okay.
The one we have is a man, but it just goes straight up and down, it doesn't, it's articulating where they can reach. Things like that.
Okay, so. To make sure, just a question that, I mean, do we both, does the EPW need one and the school need one? Seems like uh, seems like that could.
No, but ours always go, goes straight up and down, they have to reach over to it, like seats.
Maybe we sell yours and get one that that articulates as well, and then we only have one instead of two.
The art, the lift. Was a bone of contention years ago. And Walt will have readily, Dr. Willa will have readily available. Everything you want to know as to it's it's need or not, I'm certain, it was, it was, what, were you on the board when that was discussed?
Yes.
Um and 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 it was, again, turned up. A bone of contention and pushed out of as far, but I'm happy to to get that information for Walt.
Yeah, I mean, the concern I have with that, anybody can justify something they want, how realistic is that just?
Oh, I know, yep.
Uh and then the closed loop door operator, so there's eighty thousand dollars between the two schools, how is that? How was those, how are those doors currently safely being closed now? Um that's not a concern, especially at TIS, which we've had for years and years and years, now we have to spend forty thousand dollars, just curious to.
Is that a new requirement that we have those doors, do you know?
I'm aware of the state, the state regulations out there, I guess is.
Any inspection probably get done on those.
I think it's a maintenance issue, we've had a lot, we've had a lot of elevator emergencies down there over the past year or two. We've been going down, there's someone either stuck in the elevator halfway, like.
Is that a? Is that a, is that a install a uh a closed loop door operator, or is it just that we've got old elevators that maybe are?
Something that probably fitting up to maintenance and where they go every single year to do the inspection, but we've had a lot more elevator emergencies, I can tell you that.
Okay, yeah, I'm just wondering if this fixes it, or if we're still gonna have mechanical issues associated with that.
I hope they fix.
I think we question whether or not we need to spend any thousand additional equipment. My main focus is obviously next year, so, um. Not gonna, I guess, my concern with year three, is it year two? What was the fourteen million dollars that I saw? In the, uh, fourteen million dollars for year two, so I guess we. Need to look at some of these costs, because it seems like we have a huge chunk in year two. Didn't add up what the big, big increases between year one and year two are. The end of the cycle, okay. Is that huge, you're you're talking. Four times? Four times our budget, capital budget, yep. Yep.
Um, so it's the Board of Education bonding for the roof and the uh AC unit. It's at the ju- various gyms and cafeterias that there's, that you're talking about.
That's.
So that's over eight million right there.
Okay, that was the roof and what else, the AC system?
Yeah, there's uh the, the three, two or three gyms and the cafeteria. Um, it's the O H R system, if you recalled, uh, well, maybe you weren't on the council. We were going for a grant a few years ago and approved uh bonding up to a certain amount, however. Um, we didn't get the grant, we weren't able to do it, so that, you know, eventually it's gonna have to be rescinded, and then this particular one. Is going to have to be put in place, cause that, that bonding is, is.
Eight million dollars for the roof.
Yeah, the, the roof is the big player, and the thing is, um, o- over half of that eight million. I'd say about fifty percent of it is gonna hopefully be funded by state grants, school construction grants. But we have to put the whole appropriation in, um, but it, the whole eight million would not be bonded, only half of it. For whatever the grants don't cover.
Okay, so, as far as capital, yes, what's that, you had to put the whole amount in, so this capital. Budget could decrease significantly for year two if we get the grant.
Well, no, you, you have to, you have to put the whole appropriation into place, okay, so. The appropriation is eight million.
I got.
All right, but, but the debt issuance will only be about four million, I'm just rounding.
Yep, yep, okay.
And that's what's in our debt management plan currently, and, and as uh Brian was discussing earlier, we may be juggling. Um, and moving that project out to the next year, and, and we're moving the turf field and moving the AC units. So there's, there's a lot going on, this current plan does not show it that way, but um. Probably the next plan that comes around since it's out in years, uh, Brian and Yolita will be working on restructuring, yeah.
Got it. Um, glad you rec- mentioned the artificial turf, cause that was on my list as well. Uh, I know back when we put this artificial turf in, there was, there was a lot of discussion about is there really a cost benefit? To this turf, we're, we're kind of pushed on the fact that, oh yeah, it's, you know, less maintenance and. Uh, you know, it looks nicer, and, you know, you're not gonna have to replace it for a number of years. And compared it to the cost of a real field, a real ground turf, turf versus artificial turf, and here we are. Got how many years old this thing is now, it's going to need another million dollars. Of uh repair and replacement work, and I think there's been discussions about the overall environmental effects of, of. Rubber that's used in the fur, the fields themselves, and kind of the issues that may come about with those artificial turf fields, so I, I think. It's something we obviously don't have to think about now because it's out in year four. Uh, but I think we should do a serious consideration of going back to a real field. Which over the long term, I think is less costly and, and easy. Potentially we could maintain on an annual basis, so.
And locate the fields. Where the existing.
Yep.
So remove the infrastructure of the, the current.
The, the artificial turf.
Put new systems, regulars, everything. There. Scott, any thoughts?
No, I mean, they can uh do that, it's gonna take more abuse, so I mean, choose. Football, choose across user soccer, all three different fields, and. Fortunately, nobody thinks about the amount of wear and abuse that these things take. And you have to give them a rest in order to let the grass rejuvenate, like in a goal mouth, through the soccer, through the cross, you wanna have the face off. Field of that quality. You know, bench at the, the viewing point that they have at the high school to, you know, switch them over to.
Okay, I mean, I'm not saying, let's kill the field, but I think it's just something that has to be considered.
Right.
When you're spending a million dollars, there are options, I've been.
Struggling with this as well, I don't wanna replace it, um. Uh, there was a deal in place. Kind of a shake hand deal, right Lisa, where they were gonna raise money, some organization was supposed to raise money. Through it into town to help replace the field, wasn't there like a, a. One of the sporting groups was supposed to have to fund raising and contribute to a fund and chip in, and once the field was built, it disappeared. And we were left hold in the back, um, and so that's where we are.
There was some, um, there was supposed to be some, um, like rental of the field and fundraising. But also, and it was supposed to go into a separate fund to help pay for certain things and, um. Unfortunately, you know, COVID didn't help either, but um the renting of the field was very. Clear and far between as to getting it, I know, uh, Bruce had done a phenomenal amount of work for a while, they're getting. Some rentals on the field, but then some of those teams kind of fell out.
Thank you, my two counts. Counselor. Uh, two questions and one comment, um, on the pavement management, I, it's on, I think each year we have road improvements. Now we have pavement management, is pavement management like hardening lots of things, or is that a? Additional funds that we're using to help with the roads?
I understand, we have the uh, um, the run, run where we have a one point four.
Yep.
And what Lisa had done in the past was she took different, whether it was the balance of like car funds or whatever. And clustered them together, and then she stretched it out, so it wasn't just a five year line, went two to six, maybe a little. Little more, and those are, are just showing in there now, so it's actually like one point seven million, which. So, that's a lot of paper for one year.
So this is, so both of those, a lot of the one point four, and I'm just looking at, it's like slide twenty one, one point four and the three hundred and thirteen. Those are both, that, that will both go to paving, the road, keeping up the road.
Yeah, as part of that road program, they, certain parts as well.
Okay, thank you, um, the other question I have, and I'm, I, I think it's in this coming year, uh, we're talking about replacing or updating servers. Uh, I'm assuming they're just different ones, did we? To that, this past budget cycle, or maybe we just talked about it for the capital budget, was that what it was? I just feel like we talked about upgrading servers or doing something with servers last time.
We did re, um, we did update servers this fiscal year, at the end of last, uh, last fiscal year, sorry. And um, into this fiscal year, we did it over the term, um. And every five to seven years, well, it's every five years we have to replace the server, so that's where you see it. I think it's in the fifth year.
That was the redundancy that we had to replace.
Um, but, yeah, they, the lifespan of those particular servers, those are our main operations. Um, and we have um dual servers is something I in- implemented several years ago when I started here. To have um a redundant system, um, one server and one building another server in another area, and they uh, they're married. So one goes down simultaneously picks up and keeps our operations going. So again, those have to be replaced every five years, within the plan, you also see um several different um. Switches, things like that, there's different switches for the telephone system, servers, um, the tech, different technology. Different ones come due at different times, and they're staged in over the five years to replace all that technology.
Thanks, um, the other thing I just wanna say is, um, obviously, we need to be uh mindful, I'm confident that Brian is about. Only, only, you know, going up to depth things that we actually need, um, but obviously, we could not do a lot of things, uh, and save the town money in the short term. Um, but obviously, that would be, I think, short sight, and so obviously, we have to think long term about the town. Um, and not start cutting things from capital just for short term savings, uh, to the long term detriment of town, so.
Thank you, if I can jump in really quick, go ahead, Mike Wilkinson's on Zoom. He's going to answer your desk questions, uh, he's downstairs, he has, and go ahead, Mike.
Yeah. So I just wanted to answer Joe's question, so we use about thirty thousand gallons of gasoline each year or so. Per calendar year twenty five, we're paying two forty three per gallon. So if you assume, you know, three dollars at the retail, that's. It's about a savings of about seventeen thousand dollars in a year. So just to give you a, an example of what we're saving from the pump.
Yeah.
At the retail.
Great to know.
And that's a lock-in price, two forty three, so.
That's good to know, so it's a no, Brian, when you, when you see that kind of difference.
You keep in mind, the gas is the smaller portion.
And the diesel's about the same.
So it's, so I think it's two seventy, and that was what, two forty?
Two forty three, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but diesel's still a lot more at uh, at the.
Yeah, generally, Joe, we're usually anywhere from twenty five to sixty cents cheaper than what's retail generally, that's just a general statement, I think.
Okay. Well, it made perfect sense, thanks guys. Thank you. Um, go to Councilor Butler next, uh, Councilor Butler, do you have any questions?
Hi, yes, uh, thank you, um, and sorry I'm not there in person tonight, I have a couple sick kids at home, um. Uh, to a couple points, um, as far as the artificial turf goes. Um, I dealt with this previously in another municipality, um, there, there's a lot of take into consideration, and I'm, you know. I would not be opposed to weighing the options of going back to um natural grass, I mean, I think. Uh, when we were considering, excuse me, considering uh, uh, changing a, a football field at the high school. Um, in another town, um, you know, sure, we got more use, um, out of an artificial. Turf, you were able to use it and have a longer season with it, um, but there was some environmental concerns as well as some, you know, um. Studies that were being done as far as injuries to athletes as well, um, uh, overall. Uh, artificial turf won, and they got a, 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 you know, artificial turf football field, but, um, I think. There's a lot that goes into play, especially cost, um, I'm, I'm not sure where it is in comparison to maintenance for a natural turf. But it's something that probably should be considered at some point, um, if it just makes sense to continue using artificial turf. Um, as far as uh the Talin Middle School goes, um. My, uh, uh, this is with the auditorium, um, the one thing I could see being a huge issue. Uh, with shutting it down and using the high school is uh mainly with the drama club. So the middle school has a drama club, high school has a drama club, they practice, um. For a good portion of the school year, both simultaneously, they kind of Monday through Thursday. Uh, the set's built at the auditorium, the kids are practicing on the set that they're building. Um, and it would, it would be impossible for the middle school to have the drama club, um. And, and do the performance, because the high school's doing it at the same time of year, and they're practicing at the same time. Um, so, you know, right now, I just know from experience, that, you know, it's getting. Quite a bit of use, every single day the kids are in there practicing, um, you know, they're doing Newsies Junior this year, they'll be doing it in. I believe April is usually when they put on the play, um, it would be impossible, even if you could logistically get the kids over to the high school. Have them practice at the same time at the high school, as the high schoolers are practicing for their drama club. Uh, not to mention, you have band, you have, you know, assemblies going on, you have info sessions for parents. I would think that you'd run into a lot of scheduling issues, um, so, you know, short of shutting down the entire drama program. I don't know if it would be a wise choice to even consider uh shutting down the middle school auditorium. Um, other than that, I don't, I don't have anything further.
Hey, Councilor Butler. Uh, go to Councilor Bibi, Councilor Bibi, do you have any questions or comments?
She's a, she is a co-host, she might not have any. There she is.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, um, I'm also sorry I can't be, well, I'm kind of sorry I can't be with you, um, we are babysitting because we just had a new grandchild, so that's wonderful. But, um, I do have in front of me, I did, was able to print out the PDF, um, for. The, the, the packet from the packet that, um, Brian just went through, so just wanna let you know, I am able to put my eyes on all of the things that he was describing. Um, as, as he was going through them, so I, I have, um, just three things I thought. Um, I wanted to ask, one is, um, following on the Phoenix presentation about the amortization and the. And the leveling of town debt, um, I noticed that we basically run out the debt, the existing debt. Into as many as like twenty, twenty-five years into the future, which is probably not. Necessarily realistic, since in another twenty years, there, we could very well be looking at additional. Full repairs or an additional new roof or something like that, so I, what I would like to ask is if. Um, Brian, you have any way of forecasting out farther than five years? And looking at what we might be needing in the next ten to fifteen years, so we understand. Um, how, what, what longer term projects we might be looking at. Um, and I understand you may not have that answer tonight, but, um. I think it would be, you know, prudent to take a look at, we've got some schools that were built, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. Are we gonna, what are we gonna need when those schools are forty years old?
I can look at that, so you're asking for a.
Yeah, based on, based on.
A ten year?
Yeah, based on previous experience.
So a ten year.
Cause the, the really. Go ahead.
Are you looking for a ten year capital plan?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, I wanna be wary of showing like a linear reduction in, in debt. Um, when we know we might in the next, you know, say ten years or fifteen years, that may need another larger capital improvement project. Um, which is not to say that we shouldn't. I know we're doing well, I just wanna, I just wanna be realistic about the fact that. We have managed our debt very effectively, um, however, it's not gonna go to zero, right? We kind of show a linear reduction, assuming current levels, but it's not gonna go to zero. Because something else is gonna come up in twenty years. Um, so, just, and who knows, who knows what the population does, who knows what happens, um. So I just wanna make sure that we don't give the impression that we're. Gonna, that this linear progression is gonna, that nothing, no, no other large capital improvement project is gonna come up, and we're not gonna. And it's gonna go to zero, and that's the way it's gonna be, cause in the plus thirty years or forty years that I've been attending these budget hearings. We do have this discussion, but it has never actually linearly gone to zero. Um, and I'm not criticizing, I'm just, um. Looking for us to be a little. I guess have a little foresight about what could happen, saying, you know, down the road. What happens when the high school, the, the, what we call the new high school, which is now twenty years old? Yeah, probably close to twenty years old, what happens in another twenty years? Um, does it need a new roof, does it need, what does it need? Um. The other two things that I thought I could be helpful on are district fire doors, there was a question about that, I know that, um. On the project that I'm working on now, which is at Central Connecticut State University, we are looking at doing some rentals there. Um, institutional fire door, double fire doors can cost, you know, three to five thousand dollars. That's the cost of the procurement, that's not the cost to install them, so depending on how many we have. That hundred and twelve thousand dollars or thirteen thousand dollars doesn't surprise me, if it's district wide, um, I can, I'm, I'm gonna be on site tomorrow. I can do a little investigation, and I can report back to you, Brian, if you wanna get a range of what that, what that might be.
Sure.
And then, as far as.
Information, I was gonna get uh detailed information on the, the district uh fire doors from uh Dr. Will, but I'll take whatever you have as well.
Okay, that's fine, if you, if he's got an estimate rate, I can, I can probably just do a, I've got a contractor inside that can probably give me just a quick unofficial. And then, um, the, the TMS auditorium seating, uh, that seating has probably been in there since, you know. My kids were in high school in the nineties, um. Hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money for seating, however, if we mothball that space, or we have to demo it. It's gonna be a lot more than a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, and then I think the taxpayers are gonna wonder why we have a mothball ten thousand square foot space that we're not using. That we were previously using, and why didn't we just keep it up and keep it useful as opposed to having it sit there? Um, if we go in to demolish it, it's gonna be orders of magnitude more. So, um, if we need to take, you know, a look at that, um, certainly, I could also, Brian, give you some, some. Numbers on demoing out a space like that, given the age of it, but I think that to keep it running, um, and keep it. Functional, you know, over the next generation, um, that, that's not an incredibly high price to pay. That's it, that's all I got.
Thank you. Okay, I've got a couple questions, then everybody can go again, um, go through my packet. So first question I have is with the windows and door replacement on the Hicks Building. So that's fifty grand for pretty much every year in the five-year plan.
Yep.
How many windows and doors are we replacing per year? It just seems like a lot of money, you know, every single year.
To start with, I'll take, there's a couple of gate windows like right outside the development office. They're probably six feet wide by eight feet tall. Those things themselves, just two of those. If you look at the facility, you can see where they've been leaking for years. They've lost their, um, ability to, to keep the heat and the cold. I mean, when you walk by there, you can feel the heat coming through. It's, uh, they're, they're old windows. But those two windows alone, I'll bet you will cost you probably thirty thousand dollars just for those two. So we, we had to have a starting place so I could say, okay, let's see, give you pricing for, you know, this type of window. We have numerous sized windows in here. It's not like we'd say one window is gonna fit all. We need to address them and we figured it was a, a good place to start.
Okay. Thank you. So the second question I had was going back to these two board event projects, um, roof replacement at the high school and the, um, TIS and TMS, um, air conditioning, conditions. So remember talking about this on the Board of Ed and part of the concern with this project was there is new state mandates for, H VAC requirements, um, like schools had to be, to be maintained at a certain temperature, for the school year. I, I can't remember all the details, but that was part of the reason why, um, this was a, was on the capital budget. So my question is, since you were thinking about swapping in with the turf field, are you able to do that, given that there's a state mandate involved? Is there a time limit?
There isn't a state mandate yet.
There is not a state mandate yet?
Possibility. Hence my willingness to, uh, bounce it out in discussing this with Walt, uh, earlier in the week.
Okay.
And basically there's people with medical conditions, students with medical conditions that need, uh, the cafeterias that that room or at certain places in the school to be a certain temperature requirement by law. It is not yet a law and there's a possibility that it might not, and a possibility that it might. So we have it in there in the five-year plan, uh, much like the, uh, we don't know what grant funding will come, uh, down the road or how we would pay for it. If it did become law, my guess is unfunded mandates like most everything else. But we have to plan for it in case it does happen. So that's, that's why you see it there. Um, but also that's why you see the, the flexibility as it may not happen. So it's just something that we're considering. It's five years out, um, so we have some time over the next four years to, um, really nail it down.
Okay, that makes sense. It's refreshing my memory up on that. I think you had addressed this with councillor, Ms. Councillor Shay, that's a question about the tennis courts. We're going from four to three?
Six to four.
Six to four. Okay, so there's.
Which is an average of a town, of, of, of schools and asking, uh, uh, the athletic director, uh, Tim McCuskey, you know, he's been in the business forever. Town's talent size. Typically, how many courts do they have for their school, uh, programs? CIAC doesn't require a minimum, you know, that was the first, cause the CIAC require, which is the governing body of high school sports. They don't have a required. Um, so he said the average is two, I'm sorry, the average is four. If you go down to two courts, it starts to affect, uh, one, the quality of the team and the amount of stuff they can do during practice, obviously. Uh, and then the, the length and time of the, um, the meets. He said, again, four is the average, six is the Cadillac, uh, two is, you know, your own life support for your tennis program.
Yeah. I think our high school has a fairly active tennis program too, so.
And those courts do see some action if you drive by in the summer.
Yeah.
And they're in, they are in disrepair. They, they've done some good, good work. Who, did the school fix the, the benches and?
Yes.
Yeah, I think Pete and his guys had done the benches. It was, you know, it's, um, it's, it's, it's in need, obviously.
Okay.
The drainage, we're told, wasn't done in, in, when we had it, we had gotten a grant to resurface and, and fix the cracks. When we had that grant done and the engineering, um, had it, we had it looked at. It's believed that the drainage wasn't done properly. We, it's reoccurring theme of, you know, probably when things were built back in the eighties and nineties that I'm seeing here. But, uh, that the drainage wasn't done right, hence why the cracking, um, is continuing to occur. We would obviously correct that, um, with a smaller court.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I think four makes, makes sense. Like I said, it's, we do have a fairly active high school tennis program. Um, and they do get used. I drive by there quite a bit.
Dr. Will and the AD were very comfortable.
Yeah.
With four.
Also, I'll touch on the, the turf field since everybody else has, um, I think, you know, it's, it's not, not, um, not year one, um, but I think it is certainly worth at least, um, looking at, at the grass option, especially with the health implications that are coming out. I can see lots of pros and cons to, to both. I'm glad that it's, uh, lasting a bit longer than what we were originally talking about. I remember this came up when I was up on the board event and that field, I don't even think was ten years old at the time. But, um, still a pretty large expense every, not much more than ten years, but a million dollars is a budget for it now.
You know, a year or two ago, we met with, um, Dr. Will and Peter and Director Lappin.
Yep.
As between Pete, the school and DPW, we shared the maintenance for it.
Yeah.
And it was, the purpose was to come up with a maintenance plan to push this thing out, cause it, thought of a place in that field was driving me bananas.
Yeah.
When the field was put in place, there was a study done. Um, now it's, you know, old and, and stale. Uh, we could hire a consultant. I'm guessing Dr. Will could hire a consultant, uh, to look at what is best. But again, keep in mind, that field is a three sixty-five, all sports field. You got a soccer goalie standing in front of that goal. It's gonna chew it up for the football game. Those sports, uh, you know, they overlap. The field needs to, um, recover. There's just a, a lot at play here. Do we build another soccer field? Uh, or lacrosse fields? Um, so there's just, that is not a Brian Foley decision. That is a, a UN community decision. Uh, and volatile one, twelve, uh, over many years ago, um, when they decided to go, uh, that way. So, uh, I have, I have no preference. Uh, I would enjoy both.
Yeah. No, and to be clear, I'm not saying we should do one or the other here. I think you're right. There should be something that we should think about, um, especially in regards to the, the health effects. Oh, is that something that the advisory board will look into or you could, you know, ask to, to?
You would have to ask the athletic director. I haven't had one complaint or heard anything from the state or any recommendations, uh, from DPH or EHD on health implications as related to, um, the turf. I've heard plenty from the EHD on, on many other topics, but not now.
Okay, um, the next question I have is a crandall, um, building improvement. So I completely agree that building's old and it's going to be replaced. Is it even used for anything now? Is there, is it locked all the time? I don't even, I don't even know.
It's horrifying.
Yeah.
Uh, to go in there. Literally, if you go in the bathrooms. It's, again, from nineteen sixty-eight at the earliest, the building predates that. It is used for storage. There's an office, there's a nurses station.
Yeah.
In the back for, that's for our daycare, uh, the day, uh, the camps, uh, the summer camps and such. But, uh, Bruce, you want to add to that?
Oh, yeah. Besides the, the, the camp, you know, we have the rentals of the civilian. So anyone that's ever been in the civilian, we have those, um, open for, um, and Chris, just the, the spring to, say, October is not heated. So during that time, we can keep it open. It is open during the week for general public to, uh, use the facility. So if they're coming to the park, they, they have the option of those bathrooms or the court.
Okay, got it.
And then it's winterized?
Yeah, and then it's winterized, yes.
Okay. So used, but obviously not going up to its potential. So I, you know, again, totally agree that it needs to be in the capital plan. My only question is, it's like, it's not a very big building. There's almost a million dollars invested here for that building. What, what went into that estimate?
Well, as our fire marshal will tell you, um, there's gonna have to be a sprinkler system. There may be a need for an upgrade to the septic system, um, plumbing the electric, uh, and, you know, to the A facility in which kids are gonna be in office. So I had thought a million was plenty. Um, Bruce, any, any thoughts on this?
No, I totally agree with you on that.
Um, it, just knowing how things cost, um, the town has made mistakes underestimating, um, projects in the past. Uh, I don't want to do that. And if we don't spend it, we save it. And it's, that, that's how, uh, my approach is. But I think a million is, we're gonna be struggling to get that, that thing in there for a million. Or like, like we have to demo. Scott, any thoughts?
No, I agree. So the, the, believe it or not, the septic, I think, and major field are under department lot. That's, you know, when they expand the department lot, more space, they covered, they covered everything. I mean, we have access to it, but it's not an ideal spot for major field.
And then you start cooking in prevailing wages. It's more expensive for a municipality to build something than if me and I were to put something at our house.
Yeah, okay. Listen, and give me a two second, a two sentence answer on this. I don't need a, a really complicated one. But when you're doing these estimates for like a building like this, how much? Like, what, what's the process?
Depends on what it is. For something like this, I had Bruce reach out to, uh, who'd you reach? A garden barn or barnyard or water? Barnyard. But that's just for the structure.
Yeah.
Now we have to look at sprinklers. We look at septic. Um, so then I'm, now I'm consulting with, um, our DPW director, uh, Megan Masa, who does all our builds and such.
Yeah.
Uh, as to what, what the cost will be. It is a rough estimate of ballpark. I mean, it's a, you know, without paying an engineer to engineer the building.
Yeah.
By the way, there'll be an engineering costs, um, as well to, to fit everything. I know we're gonna do it through barnyard. It'll still be an engineering cost. So, so all of that's incorporated in there. And depending on the structure, basically we go to our experts to do the best we can and get as close as we can without having, the goal is to, to have that building and not have to come back to council and ask for more money.
Yeah, okay. Appreciate some of that from there. Touch on a lot, if you read the board of events from a couple of years ago, there's a lot of information on the articulating lift. I do, I do kind of like your idea, Joe, maybe seeing about, trying to share like a more capable one of the town BOE. Something to look into. TMS roof replacement, year four. When did we last replace the roof on TMS? I feel like it was replaced not too long ago. Was it partial roof replacement?
I do not have that answer, nor have I gotten up there and looked at it yet.
Okay.
That's pretty far out, right?
Year four.
Yes, I, I have not gotten with, with Walt and Pete and gone up there and looked at it yet.
Okay.
I know it, in the eighties, it was a gravel roof and it's not anymore. So there's a replacement in there somewhere.
Okay. Is that something you could figure out when it was last replaced?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Can I add something?
Sure.
Yes.
In addition, um, um, a lot of the board of events, I'm sure the superintendent worked with the manager to get answers to your questions. But on their website where they have their capital plan, they have, um, a pretty significant, um, sheet for each and every project with a lot of detail. So if, um, you know, even if you want more information over and beyond whatever you have the manager get for you, you can go right off to their website at any time and look at a lot of information there too.
Okay, thank you. Uh, what, one other question was, is up on the ambulance reserve fund usage. Um, see that we used fairly often here. How's that? Do you feel that the, um, the revenue over this same time period will replenish the ambulance reserve fund, um, or? What's the management for that?
We have a five-year plan on, on that as well. We, what we do is we take a look at, um, estimated revenues that we think we're going to get based on historical trends.
Yeah.
And then we program in the capital plan to use those funds and, and again, look at, you know, when an ambulance has, ambulance has to be replaced. It, within that five years to make sure that we think there's going to be sufficient funds in place for it. There's one year in the plan, I think it's year four, that, you know, if we get the revenues that we're estimating, we might have ten thousand left in the fund at the end of that year because the ambulance has to be purchased. So at that point, when you're lit is looking at it with the chief, some of those purchases may have to be pushed out if there's not sufficient revenue coming in. Um, we've been, you know, very fortunate over the last few years, um, to have some significant revenue in that fund.
Okay.
Calls and rescue, everything else that we charge for.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's all I have for now. Um, so you can do around a second round. I think I'll start you to check. You're the first to speak, so if you'd like to go again.
Questions?
Yeah.
Everybody knows me. I don't really, I just write notes as I do. So when I was on council twenty twenty-one, we talked a lot about the turf fields, with Scott and Bruce. And I just went back to look at some, um, notes that I have. Back then it was, let me see, eight hundred twenty-five thousand plus ten thousand dollars for maintenance. That's this twenty twenty-one. I replaced it with the field, would be, was seven fif- seven hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred eighty-three. Uh, with forty thousand dollars for maintenance work, either one or whatever. Um, so I was just going back. That sounds right. I mean, that was a pretty lengthy thing, I think, what ended up happening was patches start, like, just basic or whatever, work. Uh, fix whatever areas had issues, correct? Yeah.
The last time Walt and I and Pete went out, the repairs were all, they were in pretty good shape. But as I said earlier, we established a need to have a maintenance plan with DPW, um, and the BOE, BOE maintenance folks, uh, to maintain it and stretch this thing out, uh, as far as possible. And that's where we are now. Uh, but that, if you go look at it now, it still looks fantastic, but the field has to be rated and there's certain bounds for a soccer wall and how fast does it roll and just everything. Um, and, and a lot's taken into account other than rips and tears, um, patching those up.
Correct. Yeah, you know, it's been an ongoing.
Yep.
I forget with the, there's a.
Cleaning process involved every year. Um, there's a, there's a budget to it.
Yeah, and how old is that? Field now, because I believe there was a life expectancy of that field.
When I got here, there was a, a, a need.
And it was fifteen years it was good for? I remember.
Sounds about right. Sounds like twelve, yeah.
Oh, right.
There was a need when I got here.
Yes.
And that drove me nuts and still does. And so we're trying to push it out as far as we can.
Yeah.
Again, now we're getting to twenty-six, the, the, the back end of twenty-six. And then you're looking into when's the best time to replace that field as not to impact, um, school sports. So you're looking at the, the summer of twenty-seven uh, at the earliest. And that, that would be the roof as well, if we, if we combine those in the referendum.
I think I take notes. So, so now I'm just looking, I know it's not year four, but I'm just talking on page thirty-four. Still the track, um, the turf replacement. So it almost sounds like it's the same price as twenty twenty-one?
If it goes to referendum, we would get obviously an exact estimate.
Right.
To do the field and put it on there.
Okay.
But again, we're years out. God knows what's gonna happen.
We understand it's pretty amazing that we're still in line from eight twenty-five to basically eight thirty or something. And Joe, to answer your question, again, I don't have any particular favor to some to one or the other, but the turf field seems to be slightly less money, but not like a huge impact or whatever. My personal.
Artificial turf or real turf?
Real turf.
Oh, real turf.
No, I mean, uh, grass field, like grass is a.
Right, yeah.
You know, as.
Real grass.
I think I calculated it was seven hundred fifteen plus seven forty. I was seven fifteen plus forty, so. Yeah. So anyways, that's just some history on that. And then I wanted to go back to the ambulance fund myself. I'm sorry if I missed the question, but I missed the answer. So that fund, is that just used for capital or also staff? Just capital only for that? And is there still no policy on that? You know, we talked about last year.
We, we don't have anything that I could find. I know many, many years ago before I started. I know many, many years ago, before I started here, there was some sort of agreement, and we had found something like that online regarding when that was set up. But it was, it was many years before I even came. And, and the goal was to accumulate funds from ambulance calls to go towards the capital replacement of the ambulances. Over the years, it has also included fire gear, other updates to add, there's things like that. At one point, it also included funding for the secretary or administrative assistant who, a part of her salary to help do all the ambulance billings and all that. So it was to offset the general fund for part of that. That money still, that still sits in the general fund as a revenue, that's a little over thirty-nine thousand dollars. That comes to the general fund as revenue, anything beyond that goes to the ambulance fund for calls. But, and that was all, like I said, way before my time, and I can't, there's no really formal policy that I could find, but there was something many years ago in minutes from the town council where it was discussed and, and how it would be used and things like that. But I, I don't even know if I still have that information, so.
We have a policy on everything else, I don't know, it's something that, that we say every year, maybe a policy? Everybody has an active for that. And then I was just doing some other calculations, so with the, again, with the ambulance fund, I requested to see balances in all the accounts, so thank you, Brian, for getting that. Thank you, Jacob, for asking, Brian, for me as well. But it looks like, what was it, seven, this estimated seven, no, wait, let me open it back up. Was it three hundred thousand that's going to be projected in the ambulance fund?
One ninety-five.
One ninety-five?
Four ninety-five.
Four ninety-five, I'm sorry, all right, thank you. I have so many different spreadsheets, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So four hundred ninety-five is in it now.
That's estimated.
Estimated.
Where we think we will be at the end of this fiscal year to start next year. So it takes where we left off at the end of last year, which was probably a couple hundred thousand. And we're hoping for at least, I think, two hundred eighty thousand dollars hopefully in revenues this year to be added to come up with that four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar starting number.
So four hundred, so then I calculated the first three years with everything that you have up on the screen for the different years, and I thought I calculated eight hundred and five thousand dollars.
Probably.
So we don't really have.
We don't have the money yet, but like I said, I have a, a complete spreadsheet that takes, it's updated every year with the actual, where every end of the year. And then where we think we're going to collect revenues to at least build up that balance to cover the future capital needs. We look at it each year to make sure that, you know, what we're recommending, that there'll be at least sufficient cash flow to get those items.
Okay, just get rid of the, oh, down to
Well, that's, that's it, once you get out to year two or three or four, you know, we're, we're looking at it every year. And if there's not sufficient funds, then when the manager's working on his next capital plan, he may have to push those items out in another year or find another funding source.
Yeah, because I think one of them was pushed up, the U T B, I think was going to be in a
It got pushed out a year or two, yeah.
Yeah. So, all right, I think I like the second round, because I have a ball. Other equals, so that's all I have.
Counselor Shay?
Just one thing on the test parts, I think it's a good idea to go from six to four, that seems reasonable. I just wanted to mention that we have, have received personal comments, I think, from like residents, you know, talking about the quality of the test court, so I think it's good that it's at least on our radar, get a long-term solution to that.
Thank you. Counselor Butler?
Sorry, it took me a minute, unmute, I have nothing further.
All right, thank you. Counselor B B, any thoughts on round two? All right. Yeah. Time it if you have any thoughts. Okay. I don't have any additional thoughts either. I think I can entertain a motion to close the public hearing and is there a second to that? New discussion. All right, because we're happy to do a vote call votes. I'll go to the room first so that those online have a chance to unmute. Counselor Hudecheck, Counselor Shay, hi, Counselor Maria, hi, Counselor Butler?
Hi.
Hey, Counselor B B.
Hi, just so you know, I, I couldn't unmute myself before, so I didn't have anything further either, thank you.
Sorry about that. So we are adjourned, thank you.